You're alive, ma'am.
Welcome, everyone. I want to call this meeting to order. This is our regular meeting of Monday, September the 12th at seven o'clock in the Masonic Center as well as via Zoom. Every Councilor Ferris absent. Everyone else is here either in person or via Zoom. The municipality of Central Oregon acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Wyandotte and the Anishnabi nations, including ancestors of the Chipewas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hodnisoni, the Atawandran, and the Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Oregon. Does anyone have a disclosure, pecuniary interest, or the general nature thereof? Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'd like to declare conflict with the opposed items, session two concerning Whitford.
Thank you. Before we go on any further, I would like to acknowledge the fact that Paul Barletta, who has been with us for 33 years, he was the head of our water department, and Paul retired on August the 29th. So we just want to say thank you to Paul. I always appreciated all his reports and the work that he did, and we wish him all the best in his retirement. Would you read the first motion on the minutes, please, Mrs. Wilson?
Certainly. Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council dated Monday, August the 18th, 2022, be adopted.
Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe.
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. We have four items of correspondence requiring action. The first one is on the Hillcrest Park. You've probably read the letter, et cetera, and I staff, I assume someone on staff is going to respond with ideas on what, how we can approach this.
Madam Mayor, I'll just give a bit of background, and if Mr. Brooks would like to jump in afterwards. So this request was previously before council on June, a similar request on June 28th, 2021, and that was referred to council for budget deliberations and included in the 2022 budget for consideration. And at the direction of council, staff had a reference plan prepared to identify that separate parcel from the road lines, and also ordered signage in the decorative rock style like the rest of our family there. So that kind of deals with everything there, and I believe staff's commentary was that it could possibly be referred to the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Master Plan, which is slated for an update in 2023 to be incorporated into there, to be looked at holistically with all the parks and green spaces, recreation and trails in Central Oregon. Mr. Brooks would like to chime in with anything else.
Mr. Brooks?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I'd like to add to Mr. Shipway's comments there are that the rock has been, or the sign has been ordered and should arrive sometime early this fall.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I heard you, but just to clarify. So they're going to get a nice little stone marking? So that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes. The decorative signage that indicates the Hillcrest Park that that would be installed there to replace the existing signage when that rock arrives, and that's in alignment with the other signs throughout the Harbor area.
Go ahead. I think that's excellent. That should satisfy a lot of people down there. It sounds like a great idea. And the request for the swing will be referred to the budget?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It was referred to the budget last year. What staff are actually putting forward for council's consideration is to actually refer it to the Parks, Trails, and Recreation Master Plan update. That document guides the distribution and size of parks and where equipment goes and whatnot. After the art plan was done, staff came back to council and advised there was a number of encroachments within what is known as Hillcrest Park, and historically, council has fenced all the parks, so it would cause some concern for sure. So it may be appropriate to look at it holistically across the municipality for all the parks and all the needs for playground equipment, trails, that sort of thing.
It was my understanding as well that we agreed not to fence it because there are certain properties that have encroached on it. That was my understanding at the time we discussed it before.
Through you, Madam Mayor. There was no direction on it. It was simply conveyed that that was what historically has been done, but there was no direction to do anything further.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Actually, the request for a simple swing, I thought was fairly reasonable, and the swing sets seemed to like they last forever. And we're at the Edison Fest in Vienna. My granddaughter found one of the swing sets, probably as old as I am, swinging from a tree. I couldn't get her off it. So it's sometimes those simple things that make a neighborhood pretty happy, but.
I must admit that that was my feeling, too, that a simple swing set could fit on there without encroaching on other areas to give the children, they tend to play on it a lot. There are children there who play on it, and it's just open space. So it might be nice to have something very simple and basic. Counselor Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess to that point, I would agree, something simple and basic, but there's probably some advantages by doing it within the entire Parks and Rec review, because then you may get some savings with bulk purchases or something like that if there is other equipment required elsewhere. I guess that's the only thing I'm trying to think about.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Winn.
Um, I'm just going to say, and it's probably not going to be popular, but I spent an awful lot of time across from that park this summer, and I never saw one person on it all summer. Didn't see a child, didn't see a person tossing a ball. I didn't see anybody. I saw a garbage can sitting on it waiting for pickup and blue boxes, but not a person, not a one, not all summer. So I don't know what people were doing when I happened to be there, but I was there quite a bit, and directly across from it, and no action whatsoever. So just saying that, like, thought should go into putting anything into it if it's actually not being used. So just my thoughts.
I am aware that Dr. Havas and some others have said that their grandchildren, whenever they're visiting, go out and play there. So that may be a different one, and I believe the lady who wrote, the Underhills, who wrote this, they do have young children that play there. But in the summer, of course, there are probably a lot of them down at Little Beach rather than in the park. So I don't know. But it's certainly when I was a child, there were lots of kids playing in that park, but that's a long time ago. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Since councils made the decision, we're calling it a park, we're going to put a showing, which I'm very pleased with. Why have a park with nothing in it? They're asking for a swing set. So I hope we do something.
Well, and they're asking to put it in the 2023 budget. I mean, they know that it can't go in at this point, that it be considered for that. So what's the will of council, then? Counselor Krebitz?
I agree that it should be put into the 2023 budget for consideration. At this point, it's not something that we've had in the 2022 budget. At this point, it's in the request list and have it recognized, and we are recognizing that as a park that's already been done. So I think we should carry on as asked for by the residents.
Okay, so we'll need a motion if that's the case. Counselor Rowe, you had expressed other, and so had Counselor Winn. So I'm sorry, Mr. Brooks, you wish to speak?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, just for clarification, with if council is considering a swing set, are we talking about an accessible swing set? Are we talking about a bird's nest style? What exactly are we looking for here?
What is a bird's nest style swing set, Mr. Brooks? Sorry, that's new to me.
That'll be similar to the swing set that will be going into Union Street Park in Belmont. So it comes up, it has four chains that's hung up on a single post and provides more accessibility. So there are a number of different options here. We can go with a simple swing set. We can go with accessible style swing sets. It's really the will of council on what council decides to put in there. But I just want to have council consider that they may want to consider accessible options.
Should we maybe ask financially then to bring both options to the budget so that then a decision could be made at that time based on the costs?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Whatever council asks us to do, we can absolutely do.
Okay. Counselor Krebitz?
I believe the discussion that we were talking about was adding it to the trails to the Recreation Master Plan, and I think if we do that, we can go forward within the next budget and then discuss it at that point on what type of swing set and when and where swing sets are required within the municipality. There is a park reasonably close to this park right now that is within walking distance. So I think we need to look at this as a whole, not as an individual basis on this one item. But I'd like to defer until the 2023 budget and add it into the Recreation Master Plan. I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Okay. Counselor Winn has seconded that motion. Have you, are you able to? Have you got a motion there?
This draft motion reads, Madam Mayor, that correspondence received from Laura Underhill respecting Hillcrest Park be referred to the next Parks, Trails, and Recreation Master Plan.
And when is that Parks, Trails, Recreation Master Plan coming?
Through you, Madam Mayor. It's in, tentatively in the 2023 capital budget, so assuming council approves that, that that's something identified in development charges. Background study to be completed and update our three existing studies and consolidate them into one. And that sort of establishes thresholds and criteria for different equipment, different levels of equipment, and how much is within, what type of park, and identifies all the parts of the municipality.
I know it's a very small park, but I, to Counselor Krebitz's point, if it was a small child, I wouldn't want them walking across the road, the Four Corners and Up East Road, all the way to Little Creek, unless they have an adult with them. Because the nice thing there is it's like having your own backyard, and I know a lot of those houses don't have much of a yard, because it's, you know, they're old cottage lots. Deputy Mayor Marks?
So what I'm hearing here, we're not deciding they're going to get a swing set tonight. We're just deferring it to the capital budget.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The resolution actually purports to refer it to the Parks, Recreation, Trails Master Plan as read by Deputy Clerk.
Yeah, I agree with you, Deputy Mayor Marks. I'd rather see you that we just refer a swing set to the 23 capital budget, but because it may not meet the criteria that is needed, but I think it's a simple enough request. Anyway, we have a motion and a seconder. You ready to vote? Would you call the vote then, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
No.
Mayor Martin?
No.
Four to three in favor.
That has passed. In the second one is the Belmont Community Involvement and Awareness Event, and they're just requesting a waiving of fees for this, to use the arena. The Swans are a new branch of the lioness. So what are your thoughts? Any questions or concerns on this one? What, how does the mo, yes. I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor Winn.
Um, yeah, so just to comment on this. So the Swans, who their group has taken over from the Belmont lion nests, who don't exist anymore, it's now the Swans, but still the same people who have done all their tremendous work in, in the community of Belmont and surrounding areas, and make very valid points in their letters. So we all know everybody has suffered over the last couple of years with regards to fundraising. The fundraising that they do brings the extras to the community that tax dollars don't bring. So I'm very much in favor that we see this through and, and grant this wish of, of erasing the fees for this event. They not, this isn't just for them, but it's, it's for the community. It's for the small businesses. It's for other service groups to let, let the community know that they're there, what they've got to come in and see them, and provide the extras for, for the community. Like this goes so far for Belmont that particularly with the growth that we've seen in that area and with COVID, there's people who haven't had an opportunity to, to know just what the community is all about and what it offers. So I think this would be a great opportunity for that to happen, particularly again with what's happening at the arena at the moment where with the elevator installation, it, you know, it's just again hand tying a lot of our community service groups, and they're unable to start putting on those fundraisers. Now that things have opened up, they're still unable to go forward and do things. So I'm very much in favor of this and support it 100%.
Thank you. Would you like to read the motion, Mrs. Wilson, or Madam Mayor? You're looking because you don't know which motion. Okay. We either waive the fees or we don't waive the fees. So thoughts from the rest of you? Counselor Rowe?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I actually spoke to a couple of people from the Swans today, and I don't know, I'm very appreciative of the service clubs that do do a lot of the work. I think it's a great thing. They have done tremendous things in the village of Belmont. But I'm putting on my municipal hat and just saying if we waive fees for one, what is the precedent that gets set for the others, and how do we best treat everyone equally? I would love to be able to say, let's say that there's a, a community fund of some sort that has X number of dollars in it, and that is available for service clubs or whatever to do such things. And I think we've talked about this in the past. And then when that money is gone, it's gone for that year, and it wouldn't be a whole lot in there. So even if it wasn't a full amount every time that people were looking for, any type of donation or any type of reduction, I think would be very well received. So I really don't know how to best manage this, because I wouldn't have a good answer for another service group at a different time if that fee wasn't waived for them or any other private individuals. So I find this a very difficult decision to make.
Yeah, so we used to have in our fee schedules years ago, we had differentiated fees for charities and service clubs versus fundraising, et cetera, because this is not to raise funds. It's an awareness. Deputy Mayor Marks, you also hit your hand up.
I have no problem with supporting this. I think we've gone through some extraordinary times in an organization willing to offer some services and spread some good information. I have to support that. I understand there is a policy, but every once in a while, maybe during a pandemic, we have to relax them sometimes.
Anyone else have any comments? I need a mover, and let's go ahead, Deputy Marks.
Counselor Fiona wants to move that. I'd be happy to second it.
Go ahead.
Just can I say one more comment?
Yes.
Just, and, and I do understand, like, I get this may not be the first, but again, as Deputy Mayor Marks said, we're kind of, we're coming out of extraordinary times. We're still sort of in it, and I certainly have no problem taking everything individually and making a decision on how I feel it impacts the municipality and communities and whether I think it's warranted or not. And for sure, in this case, I feel it's warranted, because again, it is an information session that goes beyond. It's, it's not for the Swans to benefit from. It's for the community, our, one of our communities to benefit from. So I commend the Swans for bringing this back again, because it was always been a huge success and always brought great awareness to, to the community of Belmont. So yeah, again, I'm very much in favor, and I would like to move that I, that we waive the fees for this event.
And Deputy Mayor Marks, you wish to second that. Either Mr. Brooks or Mr. Perrin, can you, if this event has occurred in Belmont before the arena, I am aware, because I have been there, did they pay fees at the time, or was it free at the time in the past? Mr. Brooks?
I don't recall, Madam Mayor. My apologies.
Okay, that's why I wasn't certain. That's why I mentioned Mr. Perrin, because you used to be in charge of that area. Do you recall?
I, I don't recall.
I'm sorry. I should have asked. I guess checked with you ahead of time. I apologize. Yes, Counselor Winn?
Um, I'm just going to say, only because I've always been sort of involved with it, I'm, I'm not sure what sort of, I do believe that there was maybe a nominal fee, because I do know that in the past, a fee was charged for the tables, and I think whatever was charged maybe went to cover some nominal cost that the municipality had, had put on it. Again, saying though, like, that was in, in much happier times or more prosperous times. So again, like, something in an event like this really just helps to kickstart the community and get fundraising going again, and let community members know what's available to them. So I think for a one time, we're not saying we're putting it on every year, but for a one time to help this group get other groups together and, and get them going in a, in a new season, and, and to help start bringing those, you know, great things back to the community. So again, I, I understand the, the hesitation, but I, I think we do need to, to help these groups out just because of how much they give back to us.
Thank you. Could we put in the motion that this is a one-time event, a one-time waiving of fees, if you're, that's the motion? It's a one-time waiving of fees due to pandemic struggles and the struggles that many of our service clubs and businesses have been through. Just, so at least it will justify us doing it once.
I would have no problem with that in the motion.
Okay. Because it is precedent setting otherwise, and I mean, who says the Swans and Port Stanley aren't going to ask now for one there? Figure out some wording for that, Mrs. Wilson. Would you like to read the motion?
Yeah, and I'm willing to change this if it's not what you wanted to say. So I've got, certainly at the will of council, I would change this. Moved by Counselor Winn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that council approve waiving arena fees for rental of the Belmont Arena floor as requested by the Belmont Swans in support of the Belmont Community Involvement and Awareness Event that they are hosting on Saturday, May the 6th, 2023, and that said waiving of fees is, is on a one-time basis due to pandemic restrictions that has been experienced.
That sound okay? Okay. Would you call the vote then, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Carry?
Thank you. Our next one is the Dino Days at Cannadale Nursery, which I know Mr. Shipway's already planning to take his children, too. So the Special Events Committee met on Friday just to make sure that we could get this through in time so that they can now post it. Does anyone have any questions on this one? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Cook, that report SE 0922, Special Events Application, Dino Days, Cannadale Nurseries, be received as information, and that council approve the special events permit for the Dino Days Cannadale Nurseries to be held on Friday, September the 23rd to Sunday, September the 25th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Subject to the following recommended conditions, then the organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council, liability insurance be provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $5 million, naming the municipality of Central Oregon as co-insured and held harmless, the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, and council approval of refreshment vehicles for the event as per Bylaw 2711, Section 2 exemptions.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And then the Port Stanley Dickens Day Parade, and we have a new organizer, because Mr. and Mrs. Filewood have retired. So we did meet and go over things with Mr. Konekney, who's looking after it this year. Would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report SE 1022, Special Events Application, Port Stanley Dickens Day Parade be received as information, and that council approve the special events permit for Port Stanley Dickens Day Parade to be held on Friday, November the 25th, 2022, from 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., subject to the following recommended conditions, the organizers complying with the special events policy as adopted by council, liability insurance be provided by the organizers of the event in the amount of $5 million, naming the County of Elgin and the municipality of Central Oregon as co-insured and held harmless, the final schedule and location of the event being approved by the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services, and approval being obtained from the County of Elgin regarding the temporary closure of Colburn Street and Bridge Street for the parade route.
Any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor Winn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Okay, we have no information, just for information. So we're moving to the Central Oregon Planning Office report on the, the environmental impact study for Jaclyn Farm, Phase 5. You've read the report. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McCoom is on tonight? Go ahead, Counselor Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I know the answer to the question, but just because the maps are a little hard to interpret, the sensitive area that's in question, if it was not permitted to be part of the development, would that eliminate that development entirely, or would a portion of it still be able to be completed?
Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Counselor Rowe. The, this little cul-de-sac that the developer is proposing to extend into the formerly wooded area is in addition to their original plan for Phase 5. So yeah, Phase 5 could still go ahead and be viable without this. This is just something they thought they would ask for since the developer says, well, they paid their fines to the county for cutting the trees down, and they did the compensatory plantings elsewhere. But our response back to them as well, you had to take care of that as part of your dealings with the county. your dealings with the county under the tree bylaw. The fact remains that in the official plan, it's still designated for natural heritage and there's still trees there and there's stuff that's coming up. And we just found there to be inconsistencies between the E I S recommendations and the findings. So that's why the recommendation is here before council.
Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks?
I support the recommendation. Like, yeah, let's get another opinion.
I agree because certainly there's no reason to take out sensitive land for small cul-de-sac. So a second opinion on it, I think, is important. Does anyone any Counselor Krebitz?
So in the natural heritage area, is there any moratorium for them to go in and start cutting stuff down again in the meantime? Since they planted somewhere else? I don't know. Is there anybody that leases that? My question.
Well, the the tree commissioner, who is Jeff Lawrence, who works with Kettle and together, make him aware of it. You you sit on the kettle board, make sure he knows because, yeah, I mean, who knows what might happen? But they did. There is a fairly substantial fine and a replanting and it's the replanting. I'm I'm surprised that the county let them replant elsewhere. To me, they should have replanted right where they were. Because that's what we try to do most of the time. But they allowed it. Mr. McCoom, you have something you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I mean, the tree bylaw still does apply and the cutting that was done was predominantly in the center of the woodlot. So they kind of cleaned out the middle of it and left the peripheral trees all up. For what reason? You can only guess. But those are still up there and I think a lot of those trees would still fall under the purview of the bylaw. So the bylaw would still apply to any remaining trees.
Thank you. I think Mr. or Counselor Krebitz was just concerned that they might just pay the fine again and win. And cut. Hopefully not. Would you read the motion, please, Mrs. Wilson?
Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report C E P forty-five twenty-two, re-peer review of environmental impact study, Jaclyn Farm Phase Five Proposed Draft Plan be received for information. And that council authorized staff to initiate a peer review of the environmental impact study for the Jaclyn Farm Phase Five as prepared by Broom and Leonard for Press for Construction Limited, dated June, two thousand and twenty-two, with the cost of such peer review to be borne by the applicant in accordance with the policies of the Central Ogden Official Plan.
Thank you. No other questions? Would you call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, under the Chief Administrative Officer, the proposed redistribution of federal electoral districts. This was extremely upsetting when I got the very first email, seeing what was happening to Central Ogden in particular because it was taking a huge amount of Central Ogden and putting it in one district and a small section in the other federal district. So you've read the report, a very extensive report that Mr. Shipway prepared. Questions, please. Deputy Mayor Marks?
Maybe comment. We met here a week ago. Counselor Rowe and I were here, remember? The Federation of Agriculture had a meeting and there wasn't anyone in the room disagreed that we need to tackle this and see if we can change it. So I think that's a foregone conclusion. So whatever energy we can muster to reverse this, I'm all in favor of.
Yep. Mr. Shipway and I met with Karen Vecchio as well over this, and she has some other proposal ideas as well. So does Mr. Shipway. So yeah, I I this is, I think it's very important. It could be very destructive to both St. Thomas and Central Ogden and the whole of Elgin County, in my opinion. What is the read the motion then, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report C O thirty twenty-two, re-proposed redistribution of federal electoral districts be received for information. And that the municipality of Central Ogden coordinate efforts with Elgin County and the City of St. Thomas to represent interests and concerns pertaining to the proposed federal electoral boundary districts. And that the municipality of Central Ogden develop a submission and make a presentation at the Federal Electoral Boundaries Commission for the province of Ontario. And that the submission and presentation guiding principle be that the municipality of Central Ogden be fully contained and represented within one federal electoral district with the entirety of Elgin County and the City of St. Thomas.
Thank you. It certainly would affect grants. Yes.
Just one question. Are we in any consultation with Zoro Township or Temp Center? Because Zoro, I know with this brief side is going to three different, they have a M P in three different areas of their municipality. And Temp Center is broken into about four or five different, like we're going to be broken into in half. So I was wondering if we're doing anywhere with the other municipalities at this point or not?
Dear Madam Mayor, last week on Monday, administratively, all the Elgin County C A Os, including Elgin County and the City of St. Thomas, met to discuss. And part of the requirement to attempt to have a successful proposal is to incorporate as much detail as possible in the presentation. So for Central Ogden, that means we've spent a great deal of time coming up with proposed electoral districts and identifying the change in population to ensure that we are less than the existing deviation that's proposed. So we have not had direct consultations with municipalities outside of Elgin County, but I can say the the concepts and proposals that have been shared through the M P and locally contemplates putting all municipalities in Elgin and Middlesex into a single district. Maybe separate districts, but not dividing lower territory municipalities into multiple pieces. So the the concept is that they would remain whole.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
One of the messages from Karen Vecchio was that we there were a lot of members of just simply members of the public at the meeting. And that was sort of the rallying cry that we need to include the public. More voices is very important. It's not just politicians that want this. We need the public behind us as well.
Yes. Counselor Rowe?
Madam Mayor, just one other question. I I had asked, you know, whether all of council should be part of this delegation, if that's what you would call it. The response was that the mayor, being yourself, would be the spokesman on our behalf. But if there is anything that we can do to help you do that, or I can do to help you do that, just.
Thank you. And and that, yeah, they'll only allow one spokesperson at its specific time and even say, you know, I mean, if there are two from the commission there and if one of them can't come, then it's postponed. And I mean, it's it's anyway, I I do agree that we need to stay. I mean, for grants, for everything else, Elgin County must remain as a unit.
Don't be gridshock.
Warwick Township. It's not just a gridsey. Okay. Have you read the motion?
I did read the motion, Madam Mayor. We haven't voted.
I'm sorry. If you would call the vote then, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now to on to the Director of Fire Rescue Services, our fire chief, the monthly alarm activity report. Does anyone have any questions? Our chief is on the line, so he can answer questions if you have any. Seeing none, would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report F S ten twenty-two, re-monthly alarm activities report, August of two thousand and twenty-two, be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now we're moving on to the Director of Asset Management and Development Services, and the first one is on the exemption, a noise by law for the St. Thomas Gun Club. This has been a standard thing that we have done for years. Does anyone have any questions? If not, would you read the motion, please?
Certainly. Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report A M D S twenty-three twenty-two, re-application for exemption to the Noise Bylaw number two hundred and twelve, be received as information. And that council grant an exemption to Bylaw two hundred and twelve, being a bylaw to control noise in the municipality of Central Ogden as amended to allow the St. Thomas Gun Club to hold their winter trap shooting events taking place on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now to the monthly bylaw report for August. Does anyone have any questions on that one? Counselor Rowe?
Madam Mayor, just a comment and staff is aware that totals for August didn't get captured in the very bottom of the of the chart. So they will be, that will be adjusted.
Great. Thank you. Call the vote, please. I'm sorry.
Yep, yep, sorry, Madam Mayor. Yes, the motion reads, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Cook, that report A M D S twenty-four twenty-two, we August, two thousand and twenty-two, monthly bylaw report, be received for information.
Now you can call the vote, sorry.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you.
And I was ahead of myself. I'm sorry.
It's the next one. I I was going to say, didn't see any discrepancy in that one.
My mistake.
All right. So we're moving on to the next, which is the August monthly building report, which is the one that had the thumbs, and they are now corrected. Any questions, comments? Read the motion, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that report A M D S twenty-five twenty-two, be August, two thousand and twenty-two, monthly building report, be received for information.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the Port Stanley Sailing Squadron request for berthage while they do dredging. You've read the report. You have questions. One comment I would make is I I I'm glad to hear that they're going to be doing the dredging of that area. And so I think this is a nice way that we could accommodate that, help out by giving them the area. And it still isn't, you know, the parking lot would still have lots of space even with this. So it isn't going to impede any of the other businesses in any way, is my feeling. Would you read the motion?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Marks, sorry, Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Cook, that report A M D S twenty-six twenty-two, we Port Stanley Sailing Squadron request for berthage be received for information. And that council approved the request for berthage by the Port Stanley Sailing Squadron, subject to following conditions. Berthage be charged based on the municipality's rates and fees by law number twenty-six fifty-six. The Port Stanley Sailing Squadron and vessel owners be required to acknowledge in writing that the municipality is not liable for any damages to the vessels via a simple agreement. And said berthage approval be on a one time basis.
Thank you. Would you call the vote then, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz? Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. We have one bylaw.
Motion for the bylaw, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaw twenty-seven thirty-six be read a first and a second time?
Call the vote.
Counselor Cook, sorry, Counselor Rowe. Yeah. Or at the beginning, Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Don't believe we have any public notice. I'm sorry. Oh, I forgot. Sorry. Third reading of bylaw, the one bylaw. It was too easy. The county do all three at once, and I I sometimes get confused.
Yep. Motion reads, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaw twenty-seven thirty-six be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Krebitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. I apologize. I don't believe there's any public notice or anything specific or motions or notice of motions, but other business, I have one that I would just like to share with everyone. It's an announcement. And that is, there's this gathering to celebrate and remember the life of Queen Elizabeth, and it's Thursday, September fifteenth, at seven o'clock at the Old English Church on Walnut Street in St. Thomas. So it's open to anyone who'd like to come to that event. Does anyone else have anything they wish to announce or any questions or new business to bring up? Deputy Mayor Marks, I'm sorry, Counselor Krebitz? Sorry.
Yeah, there was a meeting down Port Stanley on Saturday at the old fire hall, and it was a lot of people brought back to the attention about the parking issues in Port Stanley. One of the things that I'd like to request, would it be possible? This needs to be discussed again. The parking isn't right the way it is now. Something has to change or we need some better details or something is going to change. I know the parking is done at the end of September, the parking, the paid parking is done at the end of September. So what I would like to see, would it be possible to get some sort of information in regards to which parking lot? The the amount of parking usage at each lot individually on a like a an exact detail of every parking lot, how much is being paid? Because I think it'll help in the future because this is going to come up for discussion again. And I think if we have a detailed assessment of which parking lot is used and to see what type of revenue is being generated in Port Stanley. So we can, going forward, we can figure out what changes need to be made if as we grant something for the businesses parking spot. There was also mentioned in discussion about possibly a tram or something from the arena to service downtown, but the discussion is going to carry on. So if we could possibly get a report, if that's possible, of every parking lot, every parking meter and the amount of usage, so it can be used in a proper discussion of the parking in the future, if that's possible.
And I assume you would want that at the end of September when the season is finished.
Yes, after the season's done. Like, I'm not asking for change at this point because it'd be rather immune to do at this point, but we need this information going forward. So when the discussion does come up again, which it will, we can have the proper information available to us.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Marks, now you may.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is parking not over October first? Which is a couple of weeks away, more or less. I'd almost think that this certainly there needs to be some kind of a recap where we are, what we did right, what we didn't, and look at the data. I don't see the rush. We will not start parking until the long weekend in May. And it probably be the new council make those decisions. I wouldn't want to rush staff. Let's take a look at it yet.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm gonna ask after the season is finished, I think we need to get a report sooner than later, just so this discussion can carry on. Like, there has to be something changed down there, and we need to know why or why not we're changing something. And so I don't think it's a badass to have the proper information available after the season is complete.
It's you could be the second meeting in October, too, which would give them a little more time to. Yes, go ahead.
To you, Madam Mayor, in an election year, the schedule in October is the second meeting in October is election day. So
Right.
I I can't, I I know how dedicated this council is, but the clerk's office would just be a little short to do a council meeting in the election. So Mr. Perrin, I think we can compile the data, and it was always staff's intent to bring back a comprehensive report anyway. Especially considering that when the User Fee Committee originally made the decision and recommendation to council, it was always that at the end of the first year, council would determine allocation of revenues. So again, that may be a decision for the next council and maybe for this council. That's up to council to decide, but staff can pull together that report and bring that back. And it would likely dovetail nicely because I believe we'll also be bringing back the master parking study. uh, the master parking study that council previously directed us to proceed with through our consultants, so we should be able to bring both of those in October. I think that's a reasonable request.
Thank you. I I believe, does the parking not go from May first to October first? Yes, not the long weekend. Didn't get one time, it used to start on the long weekend. Thank you, so um, that request will be looked after. Thank you very much.
That is.
Do you, Madam Mayor, I think this time of year, it's better, though, we just have a motion that staff be directed to report back on uh, Port Stanley paid parking statistics for council information, but they're.
Yes, I'd be pleased. I'd like to make that motion. I I just think it'll be a good tool going forward.
Yeah, and we'll just give Mrs. Wilson a chance to write that motion out.
I'll second.
Thank you. Counselor Wynn? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Perrin.
Just to clarify, uh, the motion speaks to the recap that will be in parking. Uh, if staff ha- are able to have a final report back on the parking study that council directed, we'll absolutely bring that back, but unfortunately, that timeframe's not necessarily in my purview, um, because that's the consultants doing that. But I believe we can, in fact, if we, if we can hit that, we can bring it back.
Thank you. And that will delineate each parking lot, et cetera, and the funds raised from each, yes. We've certainly had lots of suggestions and ways to change and improve. Is there any other business law, Mrs. Wilson's writing that up? Anyone else have anything to announce? If not, we'll just give Mrs. Wilson a chance to finish writing that motion.
That's not a draft, here, Madam.
Go ahead.
Certainly, at the will of council, it can be changed. Moved by Counselor Cravitz, seconded by Counselor Wynn, that council directs staff to bring forward a comprehensive report on the parking revenue that has been generated in, in each parking lot in Port Stanley for the twenty twenty-two season.
Okay.
This one, is that going to show the amount of seasonal passes, or, like, I don't know how much detail we can get in this?
Mr. Perrin?
It will give you a report that shows by parking lot, by, uh, with the number of transactions through each parking lot, uh, and how that revenue was created, whether it's through the parking machine, or whether it's through the app. Yes, including seasonal passes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would you call the vote then, please?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
The Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. We will now be moving into closed session. If you would read the motion, please?
Moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Cook, that council proceed into closed session at seven fifty-two P M. in order to address a matter pertaining to a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on, or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. Information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or territory, or a crown agency of any of them.
Thank you very much. Call the vote, please?
Counselor Rowe? Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries? Resolution carries?
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm here alive.
Thank you. Like to call, we're just come out of closed session, so uh, are there any motions from closed session, if you would move tho- or read those, please?
Madam Mayor, first motion, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that closed session item C S two re- King George VI lift bridge be received as information, and that staff proceed as directed by council.
Thank you. Call the vote?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
He did, that's the one, he stepped.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the one that he.
Has a conflict.
Conflict, sorry. Counselor Wynn, Deputy Mayor, sorry, Mayor Martin?
Yes. Thank you. The second one?
Motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that closed session item C S three re-infrastructure Ontario be received as information.
Thank you. Call the vote?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now the confirmatory bylaw?
First motion on the bylaw, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Cook, seconded by Deputy Mayor Martin, bylaw twenty-seven thirty-five be read a first and a second time?
Call the vote?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And the final motion on the bylaw?
Uh huh. Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Counselor Cook, that bylaw twenty-seven thirty-five be read a third time and finally passed?
Thank you. Call the vote?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And the final motion for adjournment?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that the regular meeting of council dated Monday, September the twelfth, twenty twenty-two be adjourned at eight fourteen P M. The next regular planning meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, September the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M.
Thank you. Call the vote?
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Wynn?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?